Okay, on our agenda for this evening, we have a public hearing to begin at 6:35, a transfer of a liquor license for the Host Hotel, 7 o'clock, a public hearing for the transfer of a liquor license for Hemlock Ridge Golf Course, permits and applications, a taxi livery service license for Dawn Marie Wally, we have department head reports, the fire department, as well as the town administrator, we have several action items to consider and possibly vote on a host agreement for the retail sale of adult-use marijuana with Heal Sturbridge, Inc., and consider and possibly vote on amendments to a community benefit agreement for the sale of medical marijuana with Heal, Inc. We will be holding that after the 6:35 public hearing, approval of a BB 5K at Highland Orchards, approval of a running out-of-summer 5K at Rapskalian, concurring with the appointment of Laura Bonnet as the administrative assistants to the finance direct department, concur with the appointment of Sean Lanz as a part-time custodian for the town of Sturbridge, acceptance of the deed for 501 Main Street, accepting a donation from WAITT, Weight Marketing, on behalf of Baba Sushi's Fundraising Night for $78 for recreational programs, approve the job description for recycling assistant, approve the job description for farmers market manager, concur with the seasonal appointment of Caitlin Tomko as the market manager for the Sturbridge Farmers Market, approve of an agreement with the town of Spencer for the loan of a fire truck, trash services for municipal buildings, we'll have old business, new business, email and correspondence, and during new business, we will also be voting on a series of measures pertaining to COVID-19, correspondence, approval of various minutes, citizens forum, any public servants announcement.
I'd say what I said before, if I sneeze, I have a raspy voice, I have severe allergies, and they're very confused because everything I'm allergic to is beginning to sprout in my garden. So, I am not ill, I want the board to know, and anybody sitting here, I have, I am not sick, it's just seasonal allergies. Those who know me, they know it plagues me every year this time.
Thank you, Priscilla.
Thank you.
Chase, new announcements?
I just want to say that we're facing some rather challenging times right now, and I would ask everyone to do the things they need to do to keep themselves safe, and so that's about all I have to say.
That's plenty.
Yes.
So, I also want to follow up as a town, we're obviously, all of us, and a community, and the globe, really, global community, concerned about the coronavirus and COVID-19 that it's caused. We are, our primary concern is the public health and safety of our residents, and also our staff. On our website, the Board of Health is going to keep updated information with respect to the daily events, because as we know, it's a very fluid situation, things are changing on a daily basis. So, I urge all residents to go online, and there's very helpful links to the CDC, to public health, and various other links, and I also had a very positive conversation with the Chair of the Board of Health, and they are going to also provide updated information about Sturbridge in particular. At this point, as of yesterday, there are no confirmed or presumptive positive cases in the town of Sturbridge. Of course, and she wanted me also to add that we still need to be extremely vigilant. I mean, anything can change in a day, and we have to engage in all the things that we've been doing, social distancing, staying home if you're sick, and the like. But I did, I've had a number of residents kind of stop me in the grocery store, whatever, and say, you know, what's going on in Sturbridge. So, that's the latest information there. There have been two cases in a surrounding town, and a third that they are investigating, so they're definitely touching Worcester County and touching surrounding communities, and we will keep you up to date as far as that goes. We have taken a number of measures already, so I'd like to just read these down. These are the closures that have taken place in response to COVID-19 as of today. The recreation department has canceled its bus trip to New York City. On March 13th, Tantasca Public Schools closed effective Monday, March 16th. Governor Baker later closed all the schools until April 6th. The remainder of the winter recreation programs have been canceled. The Board of the Joshua Hyde Library closed the library effective March 18th until Monday, April 6th, which is in line with the schools. The Sturbridge Senior Center is closed effective Tuesday, March 17th until Monday, April 6th, again, consistent with the other, with the school and the library. The senior center staff will be coordinating meals, outreach, and services while closed for those seniors that depend on that. Visitors to the Public Safety Building will be required to be served in the lobby. Access beyond the lobby will be restricted. Persons needing a permit from Public Safety can apply at the building in the lobby area. All evening meetings for town boards and commissions have been postponed or canceled after March 16th, which is tonight, until April 6, 2020. The Economic Development Coordinator is working with the Board of Health to help provide information and guidance to Sturbridge businesses affected by the governor's declaration to limit food service establishments to delivery or takeout only. And again, I want to remind everybody that Governor Baker has prohibited gatherings of 25 or more. President and Trump's task force has since come on the news a couple hours ago, and they are actually recommending stopping gatherings of 10 or more. So, you know, we need to use our common sense. If you don't have to meet with somebody, don't do it. So, pursuant to that, later this evening, we will also be voting on other measures that the Board may take, including what we will do with the Center Office Building, as well as Town Hall, and will also be voting upon whether we will move forward with a joint meeting with the Finance Committee that was scheduled for this Saturday. It's an annual event where we go over the budget. So, those are three areas that we will consider, and the last thing we will consider is whether we'll have a declaration of emergency. In Sturbridge, Town Council has informed us that such a declaration does not have any particular legal standing. We know we're already in a national emergency, and Jeff goes on to say it's not being recommended at this time by the town's Director of Emergency Management. But all of those things, we will take into account later during new business, so I urge everybody who's watching to continue watching, and also, maybe it's useful to put all of this on our town website, too, that I just read into the record.
Yep.
Okay, so, it's beyond 6:35. We have a public hearing for the transfer of a liquor license for the Host Hotel, Mr. Patel, is he here? Okay, awesome. And can I have, do I make the motion to open it before you read the town? I don't know.
I-
Do you read that first, before I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Yes, you do.
Yeah, okay, so we're gonna read into the record.
Yes, this is the notice of the public hearing. In accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 138, the Board of Selectmen will hold the public hearing on Monday, March 16th, at 6:35 PM regarding the transfer of an all-alcoholic liquor license filed by Yohish Patel of the Sturbridge Host Hotel at 366 Main Street, Sturbridge, Mass. 01566. This hearing will be held at the Veterans Memorial Hall, Sturbridge Town Hall, 308 Main Street, Sturbridge, Massachusetts.
Okay, could I have a motion to open up the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, great. So, hello, Mr. Patel. So, I gathered from the documents, you're transferring the license to Ranuka? Did I pronounce that correctly?
Yes.
Oh, I did, very good. Okay, so you want to just give us a little background about, you know, why you're doing this, or?
Yeah, we just changed the hands over there, so we're transferring from previous owner to us.
Okay, and do we have questions that we would like to ask?
I have no questions. I believe before, wasn't it just a filing, there was a, you were in before.
Yeah, so, we did the same thing, and then we didn't hold a public hearing, so this basically is just the same thing, but a public hearing.
Yeah, all right, I got you, yeah, no, I don't have any questions.
And the managers, the same as it was last time, so, there's no change of managers.
Yeah, same application.
Same application.
Right, just transfer the license.
Correct.
Do you have questions?
No.
Would anybody from the public like to participate in the discussion? Okay, hearing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
A motion?
Hold on, I don't think I voted, did we vote to-
We closed the public-
Did we vote to open it, though?
We did.
A second, okay, okay, I just wanted to make sure I'm not used to doing this.
I raised my hand anyhow.
So, can I have a motion to approve the transfer of the liquor license from Yohish Patel to Ranuka Patel?
So moved.
Second.
Is that accurate?
No.
Okay.
To, it's to-
From the milestone to us, right?
From the old owner of the Host to him.
Okay, so, but, and the corporate vote, right, what did it say under that?
The Yohish is the main licensee, and Ranuka is the manager.
Right, but I thought, I thought we were transferring it to, okay, so, we're, but we are voting to appoint Ranuka Patel to the liquor license manager position.
Correct, yeah.
Are we, are we voting Snyder or Madneck to Yohish?
Correct, that's, that's the main, main thing.
Okay.
The main transfer, and the manager is Ranuka.
That's the milestone hospitality.
Correct, correct.
Okay, do you want to make the motion, Chase, then?
Yeah, sure, I'll make a motion to transfer the liquor license from Snyder Madneck to Yohish Patel at the Host Hotel.
Yes.
Second.
And vote to appoint Ranuka Patel as the liquor license manager, do we do that as well, all in one?
Yeah.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
I have to say, a lot of people in town are very excited by the idea of the Host getting renovated and getting a facelift.
That's exciting.
So, it is very exciting, so I wish you luck with it.
Yeah, it's, then, this is the things, Corona things, so we have a lot of events getting canceled.
Yes.
Right, so, it's gonna help us to renovate it sooner.
Be able to make good use of the town.
Yeah, it'd be a good time to do it.
Three days, three days, we can, we cannot do anything, now, it's, it's just all interior things, yeah.
It's a good way to look at it.
Yeah.
Okay, good luck.
Thanks.
Stay safe.
Thank you.
Sometimes a crisis ends up being an opportunity.
Yeah, gladly. Okay, so, we're going to consider an action item to approve a host community agreement with Heal Sturbridge, so, want to come on down? So, I know when we last met, the motion didn't quite read what we were all thinking that we were agreeing to, and it's my understanding that we've since come up with language that's acceptable to our council, as well as you?
Correct.
Okay, so I'm just gonna turn it over to our town administrator, just to tell us what happens in the interim.
It seemed so long ago, at this point, but what we did was reinsert into the medical HCA, the moratorium language, but also put in the provision that if Heal Sturbridge gets a special permit, they agree never to convert, but that option is open in, in the event that Heal Sturbridge does not get a special permit. So, basically, that's what we did.
Are you on the same page with that?
Yes, we are.
Okay. Do we have any questions?
I mean, I just, so, they are getting two opportunities at the Host-
Not really.
Not really?
No. Well, maybe we can all, and do you want to, I'll give you what I think is going on here. So, originally, they had said, if they have a signed host agreement, they're gonna waive Heal, Inc.'s right to convert in a year, because that's when the moratorium lifts.
Yeah.
Once we were gonna sign three host agreements, that wasn't enough of a safety for them anymore, because they didn't know if they were gonna be one of those two.
Yeah.
So, they requested that the, the point where they will agree not to convert be moved, in other words, to them getting the special permit that they need from the town, as well as permits from the state.
Yeah.
And if they get that, Heal Sturbridge, then Heal, Inc. will not convert, and they move forward. But my understanding is, if they don't, like, for whatever reason, maybe they hit a snag, they are not giving up their right in one year to convert. So, I don't know if you want to consider that two bites of the apple, no, I'm just trying to explain what they will have a right to do. So, if Heal Sturbridge has some kind of, you know, obstacle in their way, at this point in a year, next July, that doesn't prohibit Heal, Inc. from going about the process to convert from medical to adult use.
Can, do you mind if I ask you another question?
No, absolutely.
And I appreciate you answering me like this. So, if I were holding out hope to have three stores, and we wanted to lift the conversion in, say, June for them, that would give the other two a chance to get their special permit through, and then lift the moratorium, is that-
Not necessarily.
I don't want to hurt Heal by any means, that's what I'm trying to do.
Right, so, what, so, I'm sorry, what, tell me one more time what you're thinking?
Well, I mean, I guess I'm just holding out hope that we'd have three.
You want?
Yes.
So-
And if I vote for this, that pretty much eliminates the option of having three.
Well, I don't want to put, you know, I don't want to foresee anything, here's what I think, if Heal Sturbridge moves forward, and they get one of them-
Yeah.
My understanding from talking to council is there's one more available under our bylaw, okay?
Correct.
There's one more available.
Yeah, so we would have two.
We would have two.
Yeah.
If for any reason Heal Sturbridge is not successful, I don't know if the other two are gonna move forward, let's assume they do, and they are successful, and there's a lot of if, so I don't want to-
Right.
And they are successful, then in one year, Heal, Inc. can convert.
Yeah.
And in that scenario, if the other two move forward, then we would end up possibly with three, to answer. I don't know if anybody wants to chime in, and, Priscilla?
That was the agreement with Heal from way back when, that they always had the option, if the law changed, that within five years, they would have the right to this. It's still a first-come, first-served basis, as I understand it.
Right.
Whoever gets their, their stuff in first gets it or doesn't get it, and it's all still contingent on planning. So, there's no guarantee that anybody's gonna get it, it's no guarantee for caregiver or Heal.
I would agree with that.
And I think, I just feel that we've dragged Heal along this way way too long now.
Right.
And this meeting, that should have happened, what, two weeks ago, was it, was it a week ago or two weeks, I've lost track of time. Is it two weeks or one week, whatever, it was a while ago, two, right, a while ago, that we couldn't complete, because we didn't have the quorum to meet with them. And I just think that, you know, I don't see any difference to this, it's their contract they had with us, in good faith, five years ago, almost, four years ago now, that allowed them to do this. And I've heard, I've heard the chatter in town, too, about somebody gets two bites of the apple, that's the famous saying going around. And that's from one of your competitors, but be that as it may, I don't see this as two bites of the apple. You had that right before anybody, anybody would have had a right to come in here with a medical marijuana, when you did, and we would have had them both probably, possibility, they would have both been there, and they would have all maybe had that right at one time. So, I don't see this as two, because you have to go the same hoops as everybody else for the, for the retail marijuana.
I also want to add, and then I'll turn it over to Mike for his comments, we've already, we'd have to have a motion, we've already agreed to sign a host agreement with Heal Sturbridge. That vote was taken, I almost want to say now, a month ago, and even when we had the motion to reconsider, and we came back-
It was in good faith.
Nobody, and also, nobody reconsidered signing the host agreement. Mary Blanchard, as Chair, asked, do we want to reconsider Heal, and my, nobody voted to reconsider Heal. So, Heal Sturbridge has been told since that earlier meeting, what did change is the language in Heal, Inc., because lifting of the moratorium is not upon signing of the host agreement. So, that particular agreement did change, it's once they get their special permit. But we already voted in favor of signing a host agreement with them, if anybody is now changing their mind, we would need a motion to reconsider that and vote all over again. I'm just putting that out there. So, Mike, do you want, have any input that you want to?
No, I'm, I'm fine, I just wish this had all come about sooner.
Yeah, we all do.
Okay, does any, is anybody wanting to make a motion? Is there a suggested motion here?
There is, it's in the agenda item.
Oh, here it is.
Yeah, I recommend to approve, is that the one?
Yes.
I recommend to approve and enter into the proposed host agreement with Heal Sturbridge, Inc. for a retail adult-use marijuana establishment at 660 Main Street in town, and in conjunction therewith, to approve and enter into a proposed amendment to the existing community benefit agreement with Heal, Inc. for a medical marijuana treatment center at the same location. Which vote shall supersede the vote of this Board, taken on February 3, 2020, to enter into and amend host agreement, host community agreements for this location?
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, hearing no discussion, all in favor, all opposed, and the vote carries 3-1. Good luck.
Thank you.
Stay safe.
Thank you.
May we have the opportunity to execute?
Yeah, they're gonna sign them at the end of the night, Jean's gonna pick them up, right?
Can we sign them before?
Sign them now.
Do you want to take a few minutes and sign?
Yeah.
Well, we've already seen the language, and they're traveling, right?
They have been delayed enough.
And we got 10 minutes before the next hearing, so.
Okay, we're gonna just take a five-minute break while we get the-
Thank you.
How's it?
Wow, we didn't even need a five-minute break.
Yeah. How many copies, four? Oh, yeah, two of each?
Yep.
Yep.
Finally, right?
Those were easy questions, huh?
Easy answers.
Not always that way.
No.
Do you live in Newton? I know you're in Needham. Did everything, what happened in Needham with the closings, and?
Everything's closed. And, 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 they're starting, um, soon meetings for the city council for select men.
Okay.
Let's, let's, we're gonna-
Where, I don't know what town you-
I live in Weston, and they closed my kids' schools. Some of my kids' friends texted, and they sit there, it's like, hey, hey, my school closed tomorrow, and I'm like, what? It's like, what, it's, you know, it's a Wednesday.
Wednesday?
Yeah.
You know who I feel bad for, like, the seniors in high school and college, and their parents, because now they're contemplating graduations, and that's such a big event in their lives, and in the parents' lives, you know, it's such a happy event.
I know, I didn't want to hold up the mic.
It's her, I brought this from Ole College, and they get a, a graduation certificate. Oh, did they?
Yeah.
They don't have a, they go, they got a photo on, but I don't know, I don't know if I have to graduate.
To the extent they can wait and decide later, it would be good. I know some schools aren't, like, where I went, Boston College, said it's gonna be, we're gonna mail you the diplomas.
You're done.
Our son went to Brown, and they're holding off until the end of May to make a decision. At least, you know, give a little hope, but.
Scary.
That's how I feel about, like, children's school, I mean, that's close for three weeks, but I think if we can do whatever extension, if we can keep all of us all the more staying.
Exactly.
I don't know what I'm gonna do for three weeks.
Yeah, that's-
Three weeks, yeah.
Yeah. It's different, one minute we're all very busy, and the next minute we're not, you know?
It's how fast life changes.
Yep.
Yeah. Okay, are we?
I'm, I'm just one more.
Okay, so we've signed the host agreements, it's too early for our next public hearing, so, maybe we can move on.
Taxi, what about the taxi license?
Yeah, let's move on to, thank you.
So they don't wait?
Yeah.
Hello, welcome, just sit in front of a mic, we televise it for local residents, so, we're gonna move on to the taxi livery license for Dawn Marie Wally. Would you just introduce yourself and?
Hello, my name is Dawn Marie Wally.
Okay.
I'm from Southridge.
Okay, and you're here for a-
Taxi license.
A taxi license.
Livery license, so.
Okay. Does everybody have an opportunity to look through the packet? What page did it start on? That might be good to-
It's 47.
We don't know if we can know what page sometimes.
It's hard to see your driver's license.
Yeah, I would say, I was gonna say the same thing, I mean, it won't hold you up, but like, the driver's license ended up coming out just totally black.
Did you take a-
I made my driver's license, is that what you're saying? Can you, can we make another copy now? Oh, sure. That would be helpful.
Do you, do you, we have a good color copy of it, or?
I think this is it, probably, right?
It's the best we got.
Let's just make, we'll just make another copy, because it's not, you know, legible.
It's not legible.
Yeah. Thank you. The only other thing, I guess we can wait for Jeff.
Please, Chief, okay.
We don't have, they didn't fill out Section 6, the proposed vehicles, vehicle registration for each vehicle, and a copy of the insurance certificate. I don't know if we've always enforced that before, or?
Would, would you be driving vehicles owned by Mr. Kasim, or your own vehicle?
His vehicle.
Her, his vehicle?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, we gotta check, make sure we've got-
Yeah.
-all of his vehicles and insurance certificates.
Yeah.
Which-
Yeah, what we're just talking about is on the application. I don't know if you filled this out, or Eric did, this is your application for it?
I think I did.
That's what it is.
Did you do that? Okay, we are gonna need, under, under Section 6, it has a description of the proposed vehicles, make, model, and age-
Thank you.
-and a copy of the vehicle registration for each vehicle, and a copy of the insurance certificate.
I, I think I have that in the car, I'm not sure if, if it's insurance, I don't know if I have it as insurance, would that be with the registration?
The insurance certificate? I don't, I don't think you could get it registered without your insurance, is there a-
No, I know that, but I mean, would, would the insurance be-
You'd have to get that from Mr. Kasim.
The company would be on the car.
Yeah, Eric Kasim would have to have.
You should, give us what you have.
I gotta go get it.
Okay.
Because the registration will show that it's insured.
And then we'll, probably, it will show, but then we would need that attached. We might be able to make a motion-
Yeah.
-like, pending getting this, but we do need it. Okay. So, I don't know, you want to, maybe, should we, is anybody willing to entertain a motion subject to getting the items missing in 6?
Yeah.
Okay.
Absolutely, I don't know what that means.
Okay, so what we're gonna do is, is approve the, your livery license, but it's gonna be subject to you getting, so it can't take effect until you get us the information that we need in Section 6.
Are you gonna be open tomorrow morning?
No.
That's the thing.
Well, we're gonna be voting on that, so.
What you would do is call Andrea, and say you're gonna bring it to the Town Hall and drop it in the metal box next to the back door, and we'll pick it up, and then give you a call and see whether you're good to go.
Okay.
But, but what you could do right now, is if something is in the car-
Bring it in.
Bring it, bring it to us, and then if you're missing that certificate, you can do what our town administrator suggested.
Okay.
But if you think something's already in the, you know, if you can already give a description of the vehicles-
Maybe we can make a copy for her, so she knows what's missing.
Do you have a copy of this?
Uh, no, I don't.
Okay, yeah.
I'm sorry, you can make-
That's okay, I mean, that's not, that's not your fault, we just-
Wait, I mean, Charles River already has other drivers, so we should-
We should probably have that available.
We should have that information.
Isn't one of their cars that you're gonna be driving?
That's what, yeah, she answered yes.
You have everything, you should have it already.
Have this car's insurance.
Can you, can you check? Okay, we'll make it subject to that, and then in the meantime, Andrea will check and make sure that we have what's missing.
Okay.
And if we don't, then-
And what's the car, do you know what car it is?
And what's the car, do you know what car it is, that you'll be driving?
I think it's a Ford, a black Ford. I'm not very good with the...
But...
But we should probably have all of them, because, you know, you might drive a black Ford, but you might drive a different one.
He might ask you to drive a different one for a specific time or whatever.
Make, model, and year cars, right?
Nice.
Thank you.
Andrea seems to think that we have the information from, he's been here before, so...
That's what he said, he said, that's all I would, you got to vote, and usually you'd say yes, I don't know if he's...
If you make a motion, it's not us having it or them providing it.
Right.
Right.
Nice, does somebody wanna make a motion?
Motion to approve the taxi cab livery license with Dawn Marie Wally as driver for Charles River Service, Inc.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? 4-0. Good luck, okay, so just, and you made it subject to them...
Subject to checking the, the registered vehicles and insurance that Mr. Kasim, Charles River Service, has on file with the town.
Okay, you wanna amend, you wanna second that amendment?
Yes.
Okay, so all in favor for...
So, may I ask a question?
Of course.
So if, is she, you have everything you need, if, how would I get the license if you're closed tomorrow?
I can mail it to you.
You can?
Yeah, you'll...
Your honor...
'Cause as soon as I get it, I can start working, well, if there's any work, I don't know.
We can also arrange a time where I can just come to the back of the building and hand it to you.
Oh, okay, that'd be great.
Yeah, we won't, we will not, try our best not to hold you up.
Thank you very much.
All right, have a great night.
Have a good one.
Okay, it's still not 7:05, so maybe we can approve the BBK at Highland that's been going on for several years now?
Your public hearing's at 7:00.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought it was at 7:05. Okay, never mind, we'll come back to that. Okay, next on the agenda is a public hearing for the transfer of a liquor license, Hemlock Ridge Golf Course, Lee Palmer. Hello.
In accordance with Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 138, the Board of Selectmen will hold the public hearing on Monday, March 16th, at 7:00 p.m., regarding the transfer of a wine and malt beverage liquor license filed by Lee Palmer of Hemlock Ridge Golf Course at 220 Holland Road, Fistil, Mass. 01518. This hearing will be held at Veterans Memorial Hall, Sturbridge Town Hall, 308 Main Street, Sturbridge, Massachusetts.
Okay, do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, hi, Mr. Palmer.
How you doing?
Been here before, so just wanna tell us what your...
Just trying to get the license out of my father's name into my name.
License out of your father's name into your name, okay. Does anybody know what page this starts on?
24.
Okay, thank you.
And this was the same type of situation as before, right? We just, yes.
Do we have any questions, Priscilla? Chase?
I'm good with it.
Okay, I just had one question, I mean... Just hold on. On the citizen background information?
Yeah.
You filled out the table below, and then it also asked for an affidavit providing the details?
Yeah, I sent it to her.
Okay, I wonder, I don't, where is that? I'm just not seeing it, maybe?
I sent it to the ABC lady, ABCC lady.
I, I, you have everything I've got, so did you send it directly to that?
Yeah.
See, I thought that was also part of ours. Does everybody know where I'm looking, on page 31?
Yep.
So you have an affidavit explaining those three dispositions? So I think we have something on the back on page 32, but that's not in affidavit form?
Yeah, I sent it to her, directly.
Okay, so maybe we're gonna have to have another motion to approve, subject to us getting a copy of that affidavit?
I can email our one right now.
Okay, awesome, and did we have the chief sign off on it?
That's what I was just looking for.
'Cause we usually have that as well. Didn't we go...
I don't think he does.
I thought he used to, I thought...
Did he just sign off?
Oh, no, not on these.
Yeah.
Not on these. I remember asking that question.
It's not these, it's the driver's...
Two or three hearings ago, I asked, this is, you know, whether the chief signed off and...
Well, let me ask this, I mean, I, to me, this does give a description, it was a long time ago, on page 32.
Yeah.
Are we comfortable approving it, subject to us obtaining the affidavit?
I am.
I am, too.
Okay, okay, so...
I have one at home, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if we get that, okay...
Just as long as we have an affidavit on file.
What, basically what you sent to the ABC state?
Yeah, I got it at home.
Would anybody in the public like to enter into discussion, hearing none? Can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Right.
Okay, would anybody like to make a motion approving the transfer of the liquor license?
So moved.
To Lee Palmer?
Second.
Second, subject to obtaining the affidavit?
Correct.
Okay. Second, okay.
Time you guys here, tell.
Hopefully not too long, but probably another hour.
I'll be back in 10 minutes.
Okay, awesome, so all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 4-0. Awesome, thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Good luck.
That might be one of the few activities that people may still be able to do.
Yeah, let's hope.
You know, being outside, you know, 'cause we still have to exercise and...
There's still, you know, you're outside, there's nobody in the clubhouse, really, so...
Right, yeah.
I hope so, I hope I can open.
Yeah, no, I, you know, if people golf four at a time, that's still a small group.
Yeah.
Yeah, and you're far away from it.
Most of the time, they're walking, so you just have the two in the golf cart that are close to each other.
You'll probably not be able to let everybody in with 25, and now 10, but...
If I'm playing, I'm far enough away from everybody else. We're just popping.
Anywhere near the pin, huh?
All right, we'll move on to our department reports. Chief Brasso?
Selectmen darling, how about him on Thursday?
Yes. Just a...
Evening.
Good evening.
Hello. I know you sent the reports, is there certain things you'd like to highlight before we ask questions?
Really, the, it's been kinda business as usual. We have noticed an uptick in the brush fires already this year, and some of it, as usual, is due to carelessness. So I would remind the public that especially during dry days, we do post the fire risk each day in front of the public safety complex. They could also call our office to find out what that fire risk is. It does help, even if you're not intending to burn, to know what the conditions are. We had a resident who was trying to start a campfire recently on a very windy, dry day, and it turned into a little bit of an incident for us, so that's just something I like to, to mention. You'll notice in, in this month's packet, I included some correspondence, which I haven't done in the past, but I realized that it was probably beneficial for the board to see what the public thinks of our service, and we do get several thank yous throughout the year, and I wanted to share those with the board.
Yeah, I'm gonna just read a couple of them out loud for the residents, is that a good idea? I know...
I think it's a very good idea.
One of them is, "Hey, Mary Lou, just wanted to thank you for the tour yesterday. The girls had a great time and enjoyed meeting with you. Thank you for being visible in our community and making an impact on these girls and all of the kids in Sturbridge." So that's, "I may be taking you up on your offer to help discuss topics such as safe driving at some point. I love the fact that these girls are having such an impact, you know, they may end up going into the safety and..."
Yeah.
"...career in the future of fire prevention," so that's one of them. There's another one, "Dear Mary Lou, long overdue, but you are not forgotten. Thank you so very much for taking your time to give my daughter Kimberly and her three children from Kenya a most wonderful and enjoyable tour." I couldn't read this, of your...
Looks like environment.
Environment and a ride on the big fire truck. What a wonderful time you gave us all.
Zariella?
Zariella, Arabella, and Eli. Still ask if they can see you again. My husband and I thank you so much. Another, like, very positive impact. And the third one, "Our heartfelt thank you to the emergency medical service personnel who have helped our family, my father specifically, three times since, since September. Your response, professionalism, and knowledge helped to make very stressful situations manageable. Thank you for all you do with gratitude, the Menchell family and Babcock family. Thought you'd like to hear that the UMass Emergency Department complimented how well my father's IV port line was placed. Sometimes it's nice to hear the good stuff." And we do get a lot of concerns from residents, and rightly so sometimes, but I encourage you to continue when you have positive feedback like that.
Will do, will do. The only other thing I really wanna bring to light is to reassure everybody that the Fire Department is ready to respond during this time with, with the current situation. We are properly equipped, and we're ready to roll at a moment's notice, so...
Okay, so that was something else that, you know, Priscilla looked at me, and we're on the same page, but on, on Thursday morning at 9 o'clock, we're gonna have a coronavirus discussion about the impact on Sturbridge informational. The health agent's gonna be here, I believe the Chair of the Board of Health wants to come as well, Chief Ford, so if you're able to make yourself available...
Absolutely, I'll be here.
Yeah, 'cause the, the public's starting to ask a lot of questions, and although we're gonna deal with the closings, they still wanna know, you know, how exactly do I get a test kit, and this type of thing? And the Chair of, I know the, of the Board of Health has concerns about, will we have some kind of checkpoint on those that are like, holed up in their houses, 'cause, you know, they're not leaving, not necessarily into quarantine, but just, they're trying to avoid crowds, and, and do we have a checklist of people we check on that are vulnerable, the elderly? So it'll be a good discussion if you're able to participate.
Yeah, we have put some, you know, new procedures into place, starting with the way the dispatchers take the phone call, all the way up to our response, along with the police department's response, and our transporting the patients to and from, to the hospital, we don't transport from, but to both Harrington and UMass, and in the other hospital that they want to go to.
So you've put some new...
Yes, we put some new policies into effect.
So maybe on our website, you know, the Board of Health, these are like, specific to Sturbridge? That would be nice for residents to know, we have new, you know, regulations in place, and I think that will give some comfort to people. So if you wanna like, summarize that and give it to Jeff, and we can get it on our website.
Sure.
I mean, you have to go into great detail, just, you know, that they're assured that you're on it and you have implemented it.
Sure, absolutely, absolutely.
All right, any questions?
I just wanna say, and, and I know, Chief, that I've seen your Facebook postings for the department, and they're excellent. Maybe that's another way you can kinda guide people to check out the website and the like, because you're very communicative, and that's a great, that's a very good thing.
Okay, will do, thank you.
Yeah, I'd just like to say there's, I saw a lot of compliments about the work you did with the Montessori school fire as well, and, you know, they're trying to rebuild, and, you know, we're gonna have a little hiatus here with the, the flu, but, you know, hopefully they'll get back on their feet and, and have, you know, rebuild the Montessori school. So that, but that was quite a loss, and, but the Fire Department responded right away.
Thank you.
Chief, I just wanna thank you for everything you do, and if there's anything you can think of the next two days before our meeting on Thursday that we can help you with, brainstorm it, and, you know, we're here to help, so if something comes up, you know?
I will, thank you. Appreciate that.
Yeah, excellent. Any...
That's all I have from my report. I know you have something later on regarding the fire truck, I didn't know if you wanted to, if you had questions.
Yeah, why don't we just, can we move that up? Where, this is the loan that you're taking from Spencer.
Right.
Do we wanna move to that?
Sure.
Yeah.
What number is it?
K.
It's K. Okay, what letter is it?
K.
I was just curious, is that, is that gratis? Is there just, what is...
So that you have, I believe you have a copy of the MOU, they're offering to let us borrow the truck free of charge for an undetermined amount of time.
I know, I couldn't...
We suffered a catastrophic loss of one of our fire trucks, and it appears that it's unreparable, so we're working hard to try and find a, a long-term solution, but in the meantime, the Spencer Fire Chief and the Town of Spencer have, have offered to us to use their, one of their spare fire trucks, so that we have a second fire truck.
So we should...
That's nice.
Send a thank you on behalf of the Town.
I know you have, but, the Town, for the Town.
And just, can you copy us when you send it, just so we have it?
Coordinate with the chief on that.
Yep, excellent.
Does, does the board vote on...
Yes, I think we have to vote to approve the agreement.
To approve the memorandum of understanding and ask the town administrator to sign on behalf of the town?
You wanna make that a motion?
Oh, that's a motion.
Second. All in favor? Yep, so we're gonna sign it and get a thank you out from Jeff?
I'll give the chief a call tomorrow morning, and, yeah, I'm sure they're, they're ready to go, it was...
It's very, very kind of them, we'll put something in writing, too.
It is, yeah, it is.
Reciprocity, we'll have to remember when we can help another town and pay it forward.
Yeah.
Okay, good, thank you.
Good for them, good for them.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Okay.
See you Thursday.
Thank you.
All right, stay here.
Stay safe.
Yes, stay safe.
Are you, is there something here that you need, that we, so you can go home sooner?
I have the appointment of the custodian, and I have the trash services, but I'm also sort of involved in the conversation about the buildings.
Okay, so you're gonna stay regardless?
I think so, yeah.
Okay, I just...
It's bedtime anyway, so I go.
Okay, I just wanted to give you the out, so we'll just take it in as it appears then. So I'll turn it over to our town administrator.
Page 1. We're at item B.
Yeah, your department report, yeah, that just means...
We'll cover, we'll cover the virus later on.
Okay, we're up to B.
So the budget public hearing with Tantasco, which was set for tomorrow evening, is canceled. I don't know if they've rescheduled. That was, the Finance Committee was also gonna be part of that, but that's been canceled. As part of the recruitment for a new chief of police, under the charter, I'm required to put together a committee to help select the new chief of police. The committee consists of Kristen Leo from the School Committee, Reed Hillman, he's a citizen but also retired police officer, Shane Woodson, the chief of police in Southbridge, and Klaus Hatchfield, he's a resident but also with the Rotary Club. So those are the four. So those are the four. We tried to get started last week, but the issues with the virus kind of consumed everybody's time. We'll try again to get started this week.
Any questions?
That's what I have so far.
Okay, awesome. So let's move on to B, approving the BB 5K at Highland Orchard. This is the one held every year for melanoma by the halls. Does anybody have any questions about it?
Motion, you want a motion to approve?
Yeah, it looks like Chief Ford has reviewed and approved the request, so.
May 23rd.
So far.
Right, approve the BBK for May 23rd.
Motion to approve the BB 5K for May 23rd, 2020?
Second. Do I have a second, I mean?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Right.
Okay, awesome. Here is another running event. Approval of a running out of summer 5K at Rapsgalian.
Motion to approve?
Second.
That would be for August 29th, 2020?
Correct.
A motion and second?
Just a motion and a second. All in favor?
And the chief approved it, or recommended.
Lieutenant Desert, who has been in contact with the race corner and has planned for adequate police coverage for traffic, safety, and control.
Yeah.
Okay. And we had, I'm sorry, who made the motion?
I did.
Priscilla, and you seconded it?
Chased it.
Chased it, okay. All in favor?
Four.
Okay.
I'm trying to keep it uniform, so it's easier for the minutes, you know?
Okay, we're moving on, concurring with the appointment of Laura Bonnet as the administrative assistant to the Finance Department. Want to add anything, Jeff, or?
No, Finance Director is recommending, and I concur, that Miss Bonnet assume that position vacated several months ago.
Does anyone want to make a motion? It's on page 149. It has the hours and how much she's going to make per hour.
To concur with the appointment of Laura Bonnet as administrative assistant, assistant in the Finance Department effective March 23rd, 2020, with a starting salary of 20.20 per hour, contingent upon passing all pre-employment screening.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Four zero. Right now, we're moving on to the appointment of Sean, is it Lance or Lanz?
Yeah, Lance.
Do you want to come on down as a part-time custodian for the Town of Sturbridge? Hi, Robin, do you want to provide any input on it?
Um, no, we lost a custodian in February, Rob Travis, facility coordinator.
Yes.
We lost a third custodian in the beginning of February, so this is a replacement to that vacant position. We interviewed Sean and did a background check. We're waiting for a few of his files to come through in the physical and some of the pre-employment documentation, but I'd like to recommend that we appoint him to the position of custodian for part-time.
Okay, great. Do we have any questions? Anybody willing to make the motion?
Concur with the appointment of Sean Lanz as part-time custodian, effective March 17th, 2020, with a starting wage of $16.75 per hour, contingent upon passing all pre-employment screening.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Four zero. Beautiful.
Nice.
Okay.
The master's degree.
Getting close to the end here. The next item is the acceptance of the deed for 501 Main Street. This is our new, what will be our parking lot.
So the site's been cleaned up. We actually put some stabilizer down with the contractor, some wood chips. We're prepared to take ownership. So we asked that you sign the deed, so we can schedule a closing later this month.
Okay, any questions from the board? Okay, we can sign it tonight? Do you have the actual deed to sign? Okay, so we'll sign it later. Do we need a motion to accept the deed?
Please.
Okay. Anybody willing to make a motion to accept the deed, 501 Main Street?
Is there more to it than this?
No.
No, there's a legal description that'll be part of that, but that's the signature page for the deed. We've done a title report. That's what the attorney sent us for you all to vote on. If you need more, we can get it to you.
Do you want to hold it and get a copy of the deed to read, Mike?
Yeah, well, I didn't, you know, I don't know if there's any liens or encumbrances or something, since there's no purchase, we, the town could end up, you know, I want to.
Right, the attorney did do a title search.
Yeah.
There's no, nothing wrong with the title. They're recommending moving forward with the acceptance of the deed.
Okay.
You know, we've never done it this way. I mean, I've never seen it like this.
Well, you know, go ahead, Chase.
Can we make a motion pending a clean title? Does that clear it up?
What about the deed? I agree with Mike. I mean, we've never done this like this.
Okay. I mean, you know what would be helpful, yeah, I guess, and also, a lot of times, maybe just something in writing from our attorney saying, there's, it's clean title. I mean, we should get a copy of the deed for sure.
Yeah.
But just also indicating that the title is clear. I mean, just to dot our i's and cross our t's.
Yeah, I agree.
I mean, I'm sure they did make sure, I'm sure they did a title search to make sure it's fine.
They did. And we have a copy of it.
There's no water, sewer liens, or anything like that?
No, and we've done the lien reports, so they can pay the taxes at closing.
That, okay, but I'm just going to defer to the members that would like to see it, just because we're the ones who have to sign it. So it's nice to look at it and then also be told by council.
Council that everything's.
It's a clear title, rather than just us being.
I agree.
Just signing that back. Because this is kind of like dummy proof. It's nice that.
Yeah.
So maybe for our next meeting, then we have.
In April?
Yeah, is this going to, I don't think this is going to hold anything.
It's going to settle the closing, huh?
Yeah, it's set for the 20th.
It's set for the 20th.
And I apologize, I don't know what you do in the past with deeds. This was sent by an attorney that does work for the town all the time.
No, that's fine. I mean, personally, I just, I'm okay not seeing the actual one, but I do think that our attorney, if he gave, he or she gave something to you that says the title is clear, that, I mean, that's what I would want. I mean, back when I practiced real estate, like, you know, you give something that says it's clear. I'm sure it is, but I don't know. What does everybody want to do?
Mike says on the encumbrances on it, is that what you said, something like that?
Yeah, I just, I asked about liens and encumbrances, or is there any, any verbiage in the deed that.
We don't like.
That, you know, restricts, any covenants or restrictions, or anything on the deed? I don't know.
Yeah, who wants to see it? I think that's reasonable.
I agree.
So.
It can be.
Two weeks isn't going to change the world, I don't think. Well, it does in some ways, but two weeks, I think.
No, right. I know we've handled it with that, subject to a review of the deed, or do you, would you prefer just passing on it till you have the deed and can look at it?
I'd like to look at it. I don't see that, if it's March 20th, I don't see that two weeks is going to be that big a difference in the closing.
Yeah.
This is the comment from Shirin, and I can get you a copy. Yes, we did the title research on the property. The title report is attached. Note that the property appears to be subject to the right-of-way that is shown on the plan, that is on page three of the attachment. We did not, did not grant an easement within the period of our research just to plan. I recommend someone inspect the property to see if there's a shared driveway that is used by an abutter. Other than that, there are no monetary encumbrances or other liens on the property. Jean reviewed the driveway issue, there's no shared driveway issue, so.
Yeah, well, we could have known that, and he not said that.
I think we definitely need all of that.
Is there a right-of-way in the title?
Just along Route 20.
Okay, you know what, so we can move this along. I think all of us at this point.
I'd like to see the plan and see if.
Yeah, same here.
You know.
Because it refers to a, you know, a right-of-way on a plan.
Had Mike not raised that point, we wouldn't know that.
Right. So, I mean, to the extent, you know, I guess here's where I'm coming from. Because we sign it, we should at least be as informed as staff, like Jean and the department, because we're not copied on any of this, and we really, we really should be.
Okay.
I would, I've been to closings where I had to sign, and, you know, if I didn't have the plan and all the deed in front of me, I would, no, my attorney would not ask me to sign it.
Yeah, so we're going to, we're going to put this as an agenda item for our April, what, what are we having?
April 7th?
April 7th.
April 6th.
Oh, 6th, sorry.
That was very quick.
Yep, not too far away to go home.
All right, so we're going to, we're going to hold on that. Item G, accepted donation from Weight Marketing on behalf of Baba Sushi's fundraising nights for $78 for recreation programs. That was nice. What exactly? Every day, Baba Sushi, for the people listening, donates 1% of its sales to a cause or organization in the community. For two days last year, Sturbridge Recreation was the chosen organization. Accept the donation from Baba Sushi. That's actually a great community fundraiser. I like that.
Make a motion to accept $78 donation from Baba Sushi.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is approving the job description for the recycling assistant. Jeff, you want to just tell us the vote?
Yeah, the Board of Health has two part-time recycling assistants. They never got a job description for either one of them approved through the Personnel Committee. Personnel Committee reviewed the proposed job description and recommends approval of it. They, the classification study will take care of its classification.
Awesome. How did this little, how was this, how do we come about knowing that they didn't have the job description? Did they, Board of Health come to us, or Personnel Committee catch it, or?
No, Board of Health came to us.
Oh, okay. All right, do I have a motion? Well, I'll make it. I make a motion to approve the job description for the recycling assistant at Sturbridge Landville.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The next one is the job description for the farmer's market manager.
The farmer's market's going to hire a market manager. We originally looked at going with a contract, but since we're requiring them to be on-site during the hours of the market, it doesn't quite fit the definition of a contract employee. So we've got to bring them on as staff. So we created a job description, and we're asking you to approve a seasonal appointment for a $1,500 a year stipend.
Yeah, and I'll just provide a little filler, because I'm on the Special Events Committee. The farmer's market are a group of volunteers under our purview, because we are the committee, and they're doing an outstanding job. I mean, the public loves having it. We're now going to be entering our second season. It does last a very long time now, June through October. The volunteers are, it's starting to wear on them, because it's such a time commitment. So she volunteered last year, too, but at their request, the, the market, the farmer's market volunteers came to the Special Events and said, it'd be nice if we had a contact person to get in touch with all the vendors before, do the planning. And so, within our budget, we're paying for the 1,500 stipend this year. We had money. Next year, we may not have that, and we may very well look to the Sturbridge Tourist Association to help, because they've got a huge budget. But this year, we can pay the 1,500. So that's the background on that.
Motion to approve the job description for farmer's market?
Second.
Yeah, I've got a question about this one, and perhaps the other one. Are these full-time paid positions?
Recycling assistant is an 18-hour position. The farmer's market is a seasonal position paid through a stipend, $1,500 a year stipend.
Okay, so this is, okay, so it's a seasonal position, and, or either one of them, you know, subject to, so, so 18 hours per week, it would not be subject to any, any benefits?
No.
Okay. And, so neither one of these, neither one of them said that it was a seasonal position or a part-time position in the job description. That's my only question, which.
Right, because there may be a full-time, you know, the same jobs as a full-time recycling assistant are also the part-time job. It's the same duties.
The same job description for both the part-time and?
They do the same things.
I mean, I don't.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Mike, so.
Yeah, I'm just curious, because of, you know, eligibility for, you know, for benefits. And so, if you, if you state in the job description that it's temporary, or part-time, or seasonal, it makes a difference for eligibility in the future for.
If we were to recruit a full-timer, we would make that known at the time of recruitment. But we're recruiting part-timers, and that's what we put out there in the advertising.
So how do we, when we hire somebody, how do we account for that in the classification plan for, you know?
The classification study that's underway will classify.
Whether they're full-time or part-time?
No, it'll classify what the great, what the position should be paid per hour, based upon its classification. But the duties between a full-time recycling assistant and a part-time recycling assistant are the same.
Yeah, but they're not the same position.
Well, we don't have a full-time, we don't have a full-time recycling assistant now.
But if we do, then they would be eligible for, you know, they'd be eligible for all of the benefits that the town offers, and, including retirement and so forth. So I'm just wondering how we would handle that, because it, you know, can make a difference in the financial impact of.
Well, we don't have any anticipation of hiring a full-time recycling assistant. All the ones we recruit are part-time.
Okay.
And their advertisement is part-time. The position, the conditional offer of employment is for part-time.
Yeah. I'm just used to seeing in a job description whether it's, it identifies whether it's a full-time position, a part-time position, a seasonal position, you know, usually in a job description, it's somewhere in there, it says.
If you want to amend this one to say part-time, that's fine.
I'm not, I, I just was asking the question, I really.
I mean, under the summary of the job description, we could add, you know, it says works under the direction of the town administrator. We can say this position is seasonal only. Would you want to add that?
I, I just think somewhere in the job description, it should be identified what the status is, because it can make a big difference.
Down the road.
Down the road.
Do you want to make a motion to add that language?
Yeah, yeah, that, I'll make a motion to add the status of this job description, which in this case is a seasonal position.
For the market manager.
For the market manager. We already voted on the other one, so it's, and it's, and that job description will be either part-time or full-time, is what, you know, so, it's the same duties and everything, it's just, the job, that one could have said part-time or full-time, depending on how you hire.
Right, so that's probably better to leave that general.
You can leave that general, but this one, if this is a seasonal position, we should say seasonal in it, because.
Okay, so your motion is to add the language, this position is seasonal only. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, and do we have a motion to accept the job description as amended?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Get all that, Andrea?
Okay.
Okay, the next one, oh, we already did it. Boom, boom, boom. Now, the last one is trash services for municipal buildings. So Robin's here for that, too.
Well, we need to approve the.
Did we hire the marketing, market manager?
Oh, right. That's, we didn't do Caitlin.
Oh, I'm sorry, I just, we approved her job description. Okay, so Caitlin Tomko applied for it. We got the recommendation for, for the, from the volunteers for the farmer's market. With her background, she's good with media and publicizing the events, and they trusted her. And she came in and talked to the Betterment Committee, I'm sorry, not the Betterment Committee, the Special Events Committee, and that's the background.
I move to concur with the appointment of Caitlin Tomko as seasonal farmer's market manager with a seasonal stipend of $1,500 contingent upon completing pre-employment screening. So in the motion, it says seasonal twice, so.
That's good. Is there a second?
I'll move one of those seasonals to the job description.
Okay.
A second.
Very good.
All in favor?
Thank you.
All right, now we're ready to discuss trash services.
So, one of the tasks that I have been overseeing as facility manager is the consolidation of our trash services across our municipal buildings for 301 Main Street, which is Center Office, Town Hall, the Library, Public Safety, DPW, and the Senior Center, where we all, we have current municipal pickups that are separate from the, independent of everything that happens at the recycle center. Currently, in the memo is included the information on the current year's budget. We asked for proposals from Republic and from Waste Management, and we talked to Labouf, but we did not get a formal proposal from them. Those are the three vendors that we have on our municipal sites as of today. We procured the Republic as the recommended vendor under this proposal for this authorization. We procured them using the statewide vendor contract, which is where the state has gone out and set a series of rules and requirements for vendors, as well as checked all of their backgrounds, paperwork certifications. And the state has a contract manager that modifies and manages all of that background information. So they've made it through that state process onto the vendor list. And through that, we will, we are allowed to procure and sign on a contract. So that's the statewide contract. And that exists for lots of things on the state, that exists for fire alarm services, municipal trash. municipal trash services, cleaning, janitorial services, anything that you were to hire out, even purchases of products, WP basing contracts and things like that, so.
Other questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Have you checked with other communities who have Republic on how, if they're having problems? Because on the, on the residential end, I had them for ten years and I got rid of them last, year before last, so about a year and a half now because they were horrend, they, they had been bought out by someone else. They had so many problems. You went three weeks instead of every week for delivery. It was pickup. It was horrendous. I wasn't alone. There were many people in the community who have gotten rid of them for that reason. Have you asked any community that has Republic if they're any better from municipal?
I have not. Part of the benefit of the statewide contract is that the moment we have one of these difficulties, we put the onus on the state to address it and deal with it. And it jeopardizes their entire state contract with any municipality that they have. So they have a better response with that as well.
Yeah, I, I have a hard time with, I, I, I'm having a hard time accepting Republic for that reason. I just know, if you look back two years ago, about a year and a half to two years ago, you look at, you look at Sturbridge, you look at Charlton, you look at Southbridge, you look at Rochdale, you look at Lester, all those communities were screaming at Republic. Brimfield just recently had some issues with Republic. Granted, it's the residential end, but what's the assurance they're not going to do that to us as, yeah, I know you can call someone, yet so could the resident, and it got nowhere. I don't know. I'm just, you know, the other folks can do what they choose to. I'm not supporting it because it is Republic. I'm concerned about what will happen. I just don't, sorry to say, I don't trust it. Not you. It's got nothing to do with you. Okay, nothing to do with you.
Did you get any, did we get any, like, recommendations from, is that part of the process to check reputation?
As Robin said, they're under the state bid and the state vets the companies...
Right.
Before they put them on the, the list to be approved vendors.
Right. Now, when LeBeuf didn't submit a formal proposal, they were no longer considered, right, I'm assuming? Okay. Where, where is Republic Services headquartered out of?
Used to be Auburn.
Auburn.
Used to be Auburn, yeah.
Well, Cassella's in Auburn. What, Republic?
I mean, LeBeuf is in Southbridge. Does anybody else have, I, I mean, I have no input because I'm not at all familiar with Republic.
I've used them on the commercial end and had...
Success?
Successful, but I've never used them on the residential end, so I don't, you know...
They were fine. I, I had them like ten years. They were fine. But the last, the last two years, they've been sold out. And they had all kinds of issues. Drivers, not enough drivers. They, they always had a problem. And after two months of, especially in the summer, where your trash isn't picked up for three weeks, it's a serious issue. And so it left a bad taste.
You know, Robin, I noticed it says these three service providers currently each have at least one existing town building for municipal trash pickup. So have we had any, what, what is Republic now doing for Sturbridge? Where are they picking up?
Republic is currently the waste dumpster at the Public Safety Complex. It is an on-call, so they call when it's full, which is why we're not reaping the benefits of being on a regular schedule.
The, the town of, I know the town of Agawam uses Republic for both curbside and all the town dumpsters and stuff. And Tracy DiMaio could give them a reference if you want her contact information. I'll give it to you. Let's see. Four-one-three, eight-two-one, zero-six-two-four. And Tracy's the head of the organization that has trash in Western Massachusetts, the municipalities that have trash. So, you know, she, she knows what she's talking about. So you might want to call her for reference. I haven't heard anything bad about Republic as far as municipal operations.
Yeah, and none of the, one of the reasons why I did ask the vendor, they said we have the vendors now, Waste Maintenance here at the Town Hall Dumpster, Republic there at Safety Complex, and we haven't had any difficulties with them. It's just been that we've been under a, not a contract. So it's just a process of getting back under a contract to reduce our costs.
Yeah, no, I think it's great that you're, that you and Jeff are centralizing pickup like that. Because I, to be honest, didn't even realize that we've been using different, you know, trash companies at different locations for the town. It just makes so much sense that you're doing this. I don't know how the board feels. Do you want her to look into
No, can I just ask a question? You said that they've been doing public safety for a while and they're okay, as a public safety is okay with them?
Yeah, yeah.
Then if we've already got them here, then that's fine.
And by going through the state, if there was a problem that, you know, like Priscilla had her, I mean, I respect it because she had them for ten years, the state has to kind of stand behind it. You would, you would voice your concerns to the state?
Yeah.
And then they would be on them?
Correct.
Okay, so we could always get out of the contract if we have to?
Yeah, there's that loophole.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is anybody willing to make the motion?
I'll make a motion to enter into trash service agreement with Republic Service for a three-year contract.
Is there a second?
A second, subject to appropriation, years two and three.
Are you okay with that amendment?
Yep.
Okay. All in favor? All opposed? Four, zero. All right.
Come down, Robin.
Thank you. I would like to also thank, I know that Barbara has been, having her eyes on this as well, Barbara Berry and the chief brasso as well as administrator. So I'd like to thank everybody for considering moving this forward.
Excellent.
Yeah.
I just lost my cover. Okay. So moving along, old business. Priscilla?
Old?
No. Okay, Chase, old?
No, are we going to talk about the Corona thing?
Yes.
I don't have any old.
Okay, new business, the first thing on it is email and correspondence, which I think Priscilla requested.
I did.
And then we'll move on to the Corona stuff, which I do not believe needed to be itemized because we couldn't reasonably anticipate all the changes that were taking place. So, okay.
My email, I just want to ask, when we send an email to the town administrator, you know how sometimes you reply to us and you reply to all of us? I want to ask that if a member emails you and they have a question, email just goes back to them for the moment. So that if they have a follow-up, they can follow up. But when it goes right across the board, that prohibits that person from asking you a follow-up question. This is not to not declare transparency because sometimes it's a simple question that isn't even an issue, but sometimes it leads to something else and now that person can't go anywhere with it. And so if it's something that needs to go to the entire board, either the person that sent the email can disclose it under correspondence or you can, under any, under your concept, under your section of, of the agenda.
That's fine.
That work?
Sure.
Okay, because that way, otherwise, because it happened to me once, well, once or twice, and then I, I couldn't follow up. And so I had to let it go. And then I, this way it helps us that if we're thinking about something or looking at something, we don't have to take time at a public meeting if it's something that can be answered easily. And many of those are.
Does anyone want to provide any input? Because she doesn't want to open, violate open meeting by...
Yeah, right.
You know, so after you go back and forth and it's all decided, then it can be shared.
It can be shared if it, if it needs to be, if we're talking about something simple that got fixed, it could be reported at the next meeting. I mean, either ways, fine. I don't care how anybody does it, but it just enables that person on the board to come to closure with their, with their issue or question.
That's fine.
I think that's reasonable.
Okay, I, all right, I have one more item for new business.
Okay.
I, I want to make a motion to close the Town Hall and Center Office Building to the public effective tomorrow and to suspend night hours until April sixth, as the governor has done with the schools. Our staff is extremely nervous. They're apprehensive. They have a lot of people who come in from the outside and they're very concerned and rightfully so. And so I'm asking that we close it tomorrow to the public, just to the public, until further discussion on Thursday to see if we go any steps further. But for now, it's closed to the public and they leave at four o'clock until April sixth. And then we go from there and reconsider it because we have a meeting on April sixth. So we can take it up, I would believe that evening should be on the agenda for what we're going to do, the follow-up or if there is any need for follow-up.
I will second that and then open it up for discussion. It's what we were going to move on to with new business anyway. We have a couple of, Priscilla's is pretty much follows vote to close the Central Office Building effective Tuesday till Monday, April sixth. The same with Town Hall. She's also added, which I agree with, that even with it closed to the public, that they are not required to stay beyond four o'clock.
Right.
I really don't think people are going to come in from four to seven.
They can't come in.
Oh, that's true.
They can't come in?
That's true, exactly.
Yeah, so they can't come in. So they can email or they can call the, the town, the Town Hall and, and ask any questions they have, but they can't come in. The public cannot come in. And I would assume that arrangements will be made regarding excise tax and somebody's late. I believe all that gets waived.
I don't believe we can waive excise tax. It's a state...
Not the taxes, the penalties.
No.
Why, they're doing it everywhere else.
Well, hold on, let's...
If we can, we will. My understanding from the finance director is we can't.
Let's vote on, let's vote on closing it.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, and then we'll get back to that. You're closing it from tomorrow through April sixth, which is consistent with the library, the senior center and the schools.
Right.
And you're, to the public. And then you're also allowing them to, you're lifting the seven o'clock and they're leaving at four.
Right.
And I seconded it. Do we have more discussion on that?
I agree. I agree.
If anybody wants to.
So we're going to have five days, eight to four?
No, no, I'm not going there yet. I know, because I think, I know what you're saying about their hours, but these are extenuating circumstances. And I mean, we can take, we may take this another step further on Thursday, like talk about remote participation, talk about maybe closing it Friday. But I just want to put something into effect now, right now.
So I'm confused. So Friday is still a half day?
Yeah, Friday's still a half day until we decide something different on Thursday, if we decide something different on Thursday. I just want this building closed tomorrow.
And that was next on the list to do.
No, I, I agree. I, I think we make this motion, like Priscilla said, close the building to the public tomorrow and Wednesday. We're going to have our meeting on Thursday.
Thursday and Friday.
Yeah, no, I agree. But we're going to have the meeting on Thursday.
Right.
Yeah.
To discuss moving forward, keeping the Town Hall closed to the public and best moving forward, still serving the community on Thursday. So that's...
And we may take up the Friday full day or half day. I'm fine with this week, leaving it a half day.
Right, leave it as is now.
And I may, until we lift this, I may be fine with that too.
Same here. I have a question.
Okay, yes.
So those employees that are hourly, they're going to lose three hours. Or are we going to pay them as though they worked a full week, even though we're closing on Friday at noon?
I, can I?
Go ahead, Matt.
Because it's going to, that question's going to be put to me.
Right. I believe that the government, the government is, is put money aside for hourly wage earners that are losing income. But I personally, we're talking two weeks. Personally, I think you pay them during these two weeks, like they're two normal weeks and just let it go at that. Come April sixth, I don't know what's going to be ahead of us, then we can make another decision.
I would, and again, I hate to be nitpicky, but I would like a motion to that effect that we continue...
So let's get the one motion done first.
Yeah, let's do it, one motion at a time.
And I can go over the plans we have in place for serving the public while we're closed. We spent the last day or so putting those together.
Absolutely, but right now, we're just...
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, we have no idea on any plans. So when we're asked, I mean, I was asked, I got at least ten calls today. And so when I'm asked, I have no answer.
Yeah.
And so that's why I decided, you know what, I'm just going to go for this tonight and where it goes, it goes.
I, I agree. Other towns have already taken this action.
They've already done it.
So this, all the details about how we're going to serve the public, which is great, you know, you said you'll meet them outside. We'll get to that as well.
Thursday.
We're going to get to that. But right now, it's a very simple motion. It's closed to the public till April sixth. This week, tomorrow, they do not have to stay till seven o'clock because...
Or any Tuesday till April sixth.
Anyway, to the public.
Right.
This week, you know, the hourly employees, they're going to get three more hours, fine. But they're used to closing at noon and I want to stay with that and we can revisit it.
Well, we, that will be a separate motion, the, the money.
That's, yeah, that's separate. We're not...
But I would, I would leave it as, I would leave the hours as they are. My motion leaves the hours on Friday as they are until...
Right.
Until Thursday at least, if we decide something different on Thursday. But this takes us through Thursday.
Yeah, I mean, it's no, it's no different than what, what he's suggesting here. You've just, the only added thing at this point is they don't have to stay till seven o'clock tomorrow. That's all we're changing.
Tomorrow night.
Okay, so...
I'm fine with that.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Priscilla. Okay, four, zero.
Now, I'll go further to that, to the financial one that Jeff just raised. I, my motion is that the hourly employees in the Town Hall or Center Office Building be paid complete for, until April sixth, when we have to revisit this whole thing and, and we'll have, we'll know what to do from then because we'll know what will face us then.
I'm, I'm not against that.
But we were going to take that up on Thursday.
But I would rather take that up on Thursday when we get a lot more input about how we can best serve the community.
But how's he going to answer them tomorrow when they say, what happens to me?
I can just, it's not apparel week?
Oh, okay.
So I can, and I would, so...
We can work it out.
Okay, I, I'll second her motion and then make this the discussion.
Yep.
Okay, so I'm going to second Priscilla's motion. I do think that the same question was asked of me by Becky at the library last week, because I went to see her. She was concerned that we needed a plan and she was concerned for her hourly employees. I don't know if they're all hourly, but she indicated that she has like sixteen people under her.
Most of them are part-time or something.
Okay, right. So, and I think they're probably all hourly. I mean, I don't know if there's another salary there. I don't know. But I, the number sixteen rings a bell. And she was asking just this, not if you're sick, which is going to be what Jeff's getting into, and you need to, you know, not use accumulated sick time. She was asking for this scenario where they're sent home, you know, they can't work remotely like salaried people, which is, so it's different. So if they're not there, they're not making money. She was very concerned with, are they going to have any money? So I said that I would take that up. And I was, I was going to lead to other business of mine too, because I want Jeff to look into these two pieces of legislation now from the federal government. They signed one eight billion dollar thing a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah.
And now it passed the House. Did the Senate pass it?
I don't know.
And I know President Trump, in the first bipartisan move, said to sign it. And that's the Families First Response Act for fifty billion dollars or something. I guess I want to know, I was going to make a motion after to have our town administrator research because when we do pay hourly employees, like I would like to pay them as well.
Yeah.
But I want to know what of those billions of dollars gets trickled down to the towns in terms of how we're responding. Because I feel like maybe there's money there after the fact, you know, we pay out of free cash now, but maybe they, we get reimbursed because we're paying them because we close the buildings. And to me, that's exactly what that money was supposed to go for. So I'd like to...
And April sixth is three weeks.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, three weeks. So anyway, that we have a motion. Do we have a motion?
Well, I made a motion to pay...
Okay, the hourly.
The, the Town Hall and the, and the car building.
And I seconded it. You want to discuss it on...
Third. I agree. I'm not, I want to, I am not looking to take anybody's hours away. I just would like to do this whole discussion as a big team on Thursday and go forward with the best possible route that accommodates everybody. That's...
Right. What do you think of, Mike?
Well, I'd like, like you mentioned, I'd like, if there is any more information on the, you know, whether the feds are going to reimburse the town for, for these types of expenses. I mean, it could be through FEMA or something like that. So we'll have to make sure that we're set up to document, document, document the... So we'll have to make sure that we're set up to document, document, document the everything because FEMA is really, you know, you have to be really detailed to get reimbursed. But if, especially if there's a policy that the town, a possibility that the town can get reimbursed for, for the expenses that it incurs through, from this, the, you know, the shutting down of everything with the viral because of the COVID-19. I think I would be, you know, definitely supportive of, you know, the town paying and then seeking reimbursement if it's available. But I'd like, you know, for Thursday, if possible, have a little bit more information on what the federal government's thinking about doing and whether municipalities might get some FEMA money back from this.
Okay, so I seconded it. So my question to Priscilla, we can vote. It doesn't look like it's passing. I would still support it now because we have a lot to discuss on Thursday.
Right.
That way, he has the information to go to them. But do you, do you wanna, I don't wanna call it force a vote. Do you wanna vote for the record? Or do you wanna withdraw your motion and then just deal with it?
I, I wanna vote for the record, simply, I only want this for till April 6th. And, and I think, I, I agreed to the discussion on Thursday, but I think that Thursday discussion should go after that. Because for all we know, we may be fortunate, and I, you have to stay optimistic. We may be fortunate that come April 6th, life can start to go a little bit back to normal, at which point, maybe we still won't open, but we can let them work doing other things. We can find work. So my thing is only for three weeks. That's all.
All right, we'll vote on it. I know how everybody feels. And then, I don't think it's gonna fly, but we'll have it on. And then we'll bring it up on, we're gonna bring it back up on Thursday, for sure.
I just wanna make this clear. If I vote against this, I am not against hurting the hourly rage of the town of boys.
Right. You, you just wanna have the discussion on Thursday.
I just wanna have the discussion on Thursday.
So we're gonna, so all in favor of Priscilla's motion, all opposed? So it's two-two and make sure that, I mean, you do a great job being, make sure.
And so, I feel the same way as Chase. I wanna vote on it on Thursday with more information.
So the vote was to pay the.
No, no, it's two-two, it's got voted down.
No, but that's what it was.
The motion was to pay for these three weeks, these three weeks, that's it. After that, whatever discussion we do on Thursday.
And my vote was mainly to give them a firm answer tomorrow when we close it. It's only two days and I'm glad it's not a pay week anyway.
Yeah, that's a good thing.
So this way here, we'll talk about it. It's just gonna end up being kind of a long meeting.
You will be re-voting on Thursday.
Yeah, and I'm.
Very long meeting.
As far as I'm concerned, it's gonna pass on Thursday. I just want more information.
Okay, no, that's fine, all right.
And I don't know if that will be available yet.
Yeah.
We are in a position to go ahead and document expenses. We have the necessary FEMA guidance on that. And we've done it before. But I don't know if the feds will put out guidance on what can be reimbursed and what can't. Other than your typical emergency response and that kinda stuff.
You know what, Jeff, this is all new territory for all of us.
For everybody.
We just work together and take the information as it comes and stick together.
All right, so Jeff's next suggestion is bullet, oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. Yeah, you're gonna do FinCom, right?
We're, we're gonna get to that, yeah, it's on this. Did everybody get what I got?
It's on the podium this evening.
Oh, wait. Okay, so do you have any other, does anybody have any other new business other than coro, COVID-19?
Oh, I, some, something, the very first thing that, slightly, give us brought up about the emails and, and that sort of thing. And I, it just, we do a lot of discussion by, by texting. And I think the official town business should be done by email or something. I mean, it's okay that, that we, we communicate. But I think like, you know, setting meeting dates and things like that, there should be an email that, that goes out so it's on the town server. Because any, I mean, if we're sending texts to one another, that, those are public records. And we, you know, technically, we're not supposed to delete them from our cell phones.
Okay, so you prefer, because I've been, I texted this last time.
This is an emergency situation, the times are different.
Yeah, well, yeah, but I'm, I'm just, and this is something that can, we can address six months from now. I'm not pushing to, but I'd like to, some discussion of, you know, you know, how should our conversations?
I agree, I think it would be needing stuff.
I think, I think we should be able to communicate by texting. But when it comes right down to, you know, the town administrator make, is gonna do this or the chair or the board wants to, something official done, then that should be on an email, so it's on a town server and it's a permanent public record.
I think, let me just interject. I think that's totally reasonable because we are supposed to save it. This particular time to call this meeting on Thursday, I did resort to texting.
I know.
And I, I know, I'm just telling you for the record.
I'm not being critical, I'm just bringing up an issue.
I felt comfortable with that because it is an emergency situation and we had tried, and he lifted the open meeting, Governor Baker lifted the open meeting restrictions.
I agree.
So I thought that was the easiest, quickest way to text everybody. But henceforth, if it's not an emergency situation, it is better on, on an email because I do save my emails and I don't like to save my text messages.
Right, right.
Unless it's personal, I can go back and say, yes, you said that. But, but I think you're right. I think it's a more official way to do it.
I agree, but I, with the Corona and the emergency stuff, text is nice for just this.
It's quicker.
I figured people working would, would check their texts quicker than they're gonna check their emails.
So.
Yeah.
So that's good and maybe we could bring that up at a future meeting about. But I do agree, setting meetings and stuff, email is better.
Yeah.
With the Corona stuff, I'm glad that you wanted to be texting.
Yeah.
Yeah, it got so bad, like, like employees that call, that text in sick or something like that, I just cut that out. They gotta call, you know, and things like that. Or, or send an email or something because it got kinda crazy with all the texting, like, you know, you know, wanting a vacation day or something like that. So texting can be a real problem when you're making official requests or, so, I'm just saying.
No, I think you're right, I, I agree.
Since this is new, new business, I just wanted to announce that Boston 25 News has Stop &amp; Shop and I figured I'd announce it because they're in our community. Starting March 19th, 6:00 AM to 7:30 AM, only customers 60 and older are allowed to shop. So they're kinda giving an hour and a half to.
Oh, say that again, Stop &amp; Shop, 6:30 in the morning?
6:00 AM to 7:30 AM, only customers 60 and older are allowed to shop, so.
And I go to that too, I saw that too. Can I, I'd like to ask the senior, senior center folks to contact, if they have residents that need groceries because 6:30 in the morning is very early for some seniors. It's impossible.
Six, not even six thirty.
Yeah, six, that's even worse. Six to 7:30, some, some seniors cannot do that. They physically, physically cannot, are not able to. So what happens to them? Whereas if they could call in to the, to the senior center and say, could somebody please get me milk and a loaf of bread or whatever, then they can go whenever and just drop it on the front door. I mean, I, I think that's a great thing that Stop &amp; Shop is doing and I hope some others pick up from it. I really do. I just think the hour is, for some people, too early.
Well, hopefully, maybe we invite Leslie.
Senior Center, yeah.
To, to come at nine too. So we can share ideas with her.
Yeah.
And put this on the website too.
I think the more people, the more department heads here Thursday, the better. I really do, I think the more people here Thursday.
And then we'll have a cohesive plan and.
We should ask Stop &amp; Shop if they would do something special for seniors with their P-Pod service, where they actually.
No more, I, I thought that got suspended, but I, that could be wrong. That might have been short-term. I had heard it had been, but.
They still have it in some areas.
Yeah, may not have been here, who knows?
Around here, they might have done away with it.
But that would be a good idea. P-Pod a certain hour for seniors, you know, even.
Can, can we talk about the plan we already have for operating this week?
Yeah, well, I'm gonna move on to the next vote.
If we're talking about developing a plan on Thursday.
Well, we wanna be part of it, that's our, I think that's the.
I understand, but.
Y'all have time to tell you what you've already agreed to.
Okay.
I'm just going, you gave me this memo and they're action items. So I just was trying to get through the action items and we'll definitely listen. The next thing that Jeff had is vote to suspend the personnel rules so that an employee who is isolated due to COVID-19 or is recovering from COVID-19 can stay home and not use accumulated sick time. This would include part-time personnel who would be compensated based upon what the average number of hours they would have worked. So you wanna, I mean, wanna explain more or people have questions?
Yeah, I think the concern for a lot of people that are, that are struggling to decide whether to stay home or not is using their time or don't have time or don't get sick time. So I think allowing them to stay home and not worrying about getting paid for that time is probably appropriate.
I would support it. I would like it to go a little further though. Or if they're caring for somebody who is isolated due to COVID-19.
Yeah.
A family member. Because it's kinda like the family leaving, you know, it could be themselves or if they need to, it's not really hitting the younger population, but if they need to take care of somebody, I also don't want them to have to use their accumulated time.
I agree.
So does somebody wanna make the motion that Jeff is suggesting with the added in their household?
So, so moved.
And put a June 30 date on it for now.
Okay. So vote to suspend the personnel rules until June 30th. And Priscilla made the motion so that an employee who is isolated due to COVID-19 or is recovering from COVID-19 or somebody in their household can stay home and not use. Is there, Chase could do second, somebody second Priscilla's motion?
I think I did.
I thought you did too. Okay, all in favor? Four, nothing. The next action item is discussion about going forward with the Saturday joint meeting with the FinCom.
I think we should cancel it.
I am total agreement.
Yep.
You know, it sets a bad example for the community that's gonna be locked down and then we're here all meeting. And especially if Trump's task force just had 10 people.
Right. We've already exceeded it with the two groups.
Right, I, I don't wanna.
Yeah, who knows if we'll have to postpone town meeting at this point.
Right. And it's not, it's absolutely not a critical meeting to have. We all have our budget books.
Yeah.
That meeting was added really to try to eliminate the staff from having to come to us and FinCom. And all it's really done is added, I mean, it's great to get together with finance, but it didn't really serve its purpose either because now they come to the finance committee, they come to the Board of Selectmen and then they come to the joint meeting too.
Yeah.
So, okay, does anybody wanna make a motion?
In your discussion, oh, okay.
Oh, go ahead.
If we have to, because the warrant items have to be on a certain date and all this kinda stuff, if we have to postpone those warrant items until we talk the budget through, then that's gonna, that might be a possibility that'll have to happen at that point. You know what I mean? You know how our warrant items have to be in by a certain date? And we have to discuss the budget line by line like we do? We may not have that time. God, because God knows what will happen after April 6th, we don't know.
Right.
So the, the postponement of this meeting or the, or the total elimination of this meeting, maybe. I mean, that could be an option too, total eliminate.
Well, at this point, like, my suggestion would just be to cancel it. And if we're able to, to schedule it in the future, we will. It's not a meeting where finance can't, you know, make recommendations on the budget and we can't make recommendations on the budget. I mean, if somebody wants to postpone it till a certain date, they can. I might, I am fine for now canceling it.
So I'll make a motion to cancel the Saturday, the joint meeting with FinCom and the Board of Selectmen scheduled for March 21st to be canceled.
Okay, and I will, you wanna?
Sure, I'll second it.
Okay, any more discussion? All in favor? And in the future, if FinCom asks, then we can come up with another Saturday when this.
Yeah, that's fine.
We will, but if we can't, I think we can both still move forward with the budgets without that, for one year, right?
FinCom and the Board of Selectmen could both live without it if necessary.
Right. Okay, the last item, and then I'll turn it over to Jeff to let him, to let us know what he's suggesting, is consider a declaration of emergency. And it goes on to say, although town council advises that such a declaration does not have any particular legal standing and it is not being recommended at this time by the town's Director of Emergency Management, it may be of assistance if federal or state relief grants are necessary. A draft declaration is attached.
We can have this for Thursday and we can try to gather some more information. Some towns are doing it, some towns aren't.
What is the reason the Director of Emergency Management is not recommending it?
The only reason to do it would be for the federal assistance and we don't know if that's gonna be required at this point.
Is it, is who's, is this Chief Ford?
Chief Ford.
Okay. I mean, here's what I think. I understand his, you know, he doesn't, I would say it's, it's useful for federal or state money and that's why we have a national emergency and a state emergency. But I also think it's useful to, symbolically, to say we're in an emergency situation.
I think it sends it home hard.
I think it sends it home to the residents. I mean, if we declared, if President Trump declared a national emergency and Governor Baker declared a state emergency, I don't know why we also, I think it sends a message to our residents that we're taking it seriously. And if we're gonna do it in the future to get grant money, now's the time to declare it. I don't see the downside, I guess, of declaring it.
I don't think there is a downside. Because I do think it sends a stronger message that this is a serious situation. I, when you declare, somehow people hear it different.
I, I agree. And.
So this can wait till Thursday? Or do you want it to be today?
Personally, I'm, I'm for it, so I, I think the less that we have to talk about on Thursday.
I agree.
The better. And, and again, there's no downside. We're just also agreeing with the federal and state government that we're in a state of emergency.
Okay.
So.
I'll make a motion that we declare, that we submit, enact a declaration of emergency.
Second.
Okay, as set forth in the recommended.
Yes, as set forth.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now I'll turn it over to Jeff. I think that's all the action items you had.
It's all I've requested.
All right, awesome.
Okay, so operationally, for the next few weeks, now that we've closed the town hall and COB to the public, we spent today going over what can be done and what can't be done. So for this building, it's, it's easier than across the street. Excise tax last day is, is tomorrow. I don't know about the waiving of any interest or penalties, we can find out about that, but I'm not aware the towns can do that. But if we can, we'll bring that information to you on Thursday. So we do have a drop box in the back. Both doors will have phone numbers and email addresses on them. If you need help, call the person and it'll be direct line numbers, not a general mailbox number. And same with emails, you'll have direct emails. So we can work independently or work with the public through emails, phones, online, forms are online, those kinda things, so that should work out okay. Like I said, if someone needs to come to the door, I know there may be some appointments for marriage licenses that may need to take place face to face, but those are up, you know, you can do one-on-ones if you need to. Across the street, today, we had a drop box mounted on that building. So people that wanna drop off an electrical permit, a building permit, those kinda things, can do that in the box. And again, the phone numbers and contact information for each department are there[1706.22] And again, the phone numbers and contact information for each department are there to deal with people one-on-one if they need to deal with people, but also to make payments and drop off permit applications and other paperwork. There's a box to do that, a secure box to do that. And that was mounted today. The boards and committees from now until April 6 have been canceled. So, the good news about this month is there's five Mondays. There wasn't that many activities planned already. So, that's been pushed along with the chairman of these boards. Town meeting, we did ask the town attorney what happens with town meeting. And I think the concern's going to be, even if the school is open, do they want a group of people in the building that they are not familiar with while the kids are still occupying the building? Not at the same time, but school's still underway for the school year. So, according to the law in the town attorney and the clerk and the moderator can appear at the location, pick a date and time to postpone or adjourn the meeting, too. So, we can pick a date, they can show up on June 1 and move the date of the meeting later in June, preferably after the kids have adjourned for the year. That way, we don't have kids in the building or coming back the next day, or there's not an intermix of people in the building when the kids are there. So, that would probably look at town meeting if we had to go that far. Other than that, DPW is helping deliver meals with the seniors. They're going to put a sign in their office door, you know, no, no public, but they don't get a lot of public anyway. Police and fire will stock, but they're going to go ahead and work with the region, Emergency Management Region, on making sure that supplies are available. Building inspections will continue if they have to. My concern on the building permit side was if someone's water heater goes, if someone's electric goes, if they need a well pump, that we can still get out there and do inspections. We're coordinating PPE for the inspector if he wants it and if they need it. So, we want to make sure that that's available. If there are inspections that can wait, they can wait, but there are some that won't be able to wait. People will still want to do work and will still have to do field visits and so forth when necessary.
Do you have a question?
Please, that's, that's what I have.
Okay. One question that came up, what about the town election?
Lyn, the town clerk still feels strongly that they can go forward at this time. It's in mid-April. OSB is still on board with allowing us to use that location, but she'll have to take direction if, if the state pushes it.
Correct.
But she's still prepared to move forward at this time.
Okay. Because I know the town planner sent out something from Koppelman and Page regarding postponing annual town elections and what the process was if need be.
The clerk still says she can go forward.
Well, that's fine, because it would be her call. I mean, she would know.
Right. The transfer station will stay open. It's some people's only availability, getting rid of the trash. We don't want trash to pile up, so we'll keep the transfer station open. Recreation programs are canceled, but the playgrounds will be open for now. There are some towns that are closing playgrounds. The rec committee did not want to do that yet. So, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
There, there won't be any organized recreational programs like baseball or?
All canceled for now.
It's all canceled.
Yeah. I mean, they're still going, oh, I don't, I'm sorry.
I'm just saying that so people realize that that's all out, too.
The rec department has notified their coaches and their leagues.
Yeah.
But we can't stop grouping people from getting together and playing ball.
No. No, but, but other towns have closed playgrounds. I, just as soon would like to see Annie here, just because now President Trump is saying 10 or less. So, with school canceled, if five moms get together with all their kids, and we've got 30 kids, you know, we're violating Governor Baker's mandate of gatherings of 25 or more. And it's also violating President Trump's recommendation, because the federal government can't impose it, of 10 or less. And it is town property.
Right.
So, I don't, I don't really know how, I personally agree with the towns that have closed the playgrounds. But I, you know, I think maybe we need to, I don't.
Well, even those towns that have closed, they admit it's going to be hard to police.
Right.
So, the real issue isn't the gathering, it's, we're not in a position to keep them clean. It's really about sanitizing the play structure, which no one really has the capability to do. The secondary issue is, is the gathering of the people. But if this board wants to make a recommendation to the rec board to close the playgrounds, I can forward that to them.
I would like to wait till Thursday.
Yeah, but I want it discussed.
Absolutely. I think we invite Annie. Again, the more, the better on Thursday. I'm, personally, I'm torn on it. I want to talk to a few people, and I'd like to take 80 steps, discuss it Thursday.
And I, I'd like to piggyback to that, that if she wants them open, what is, what are they going to do to clean them? I have no problem leaving them open if every day somehow they're clean, disinfected. Then I don't have a problem with it. But I know that's next to impossible, but I'm just asking because what measures are they taking? It's okay to leave it open, but I, I think I lean to select mandaling. As much as I want to see it and keep the children outside as much as you can, what happens if you get 25 kids from different homes, obviously? And where have the adults been exposed? That's the other issue.
And we closed our organized sports. So, I don't know why, but I agree. We'll, we'll bring it up. I'm just saying, these are my thoughts. I mean, the NBA can't, we, we've canceled all these sporting events, but now we're saying, okay, playgrounds can stay open. And I don't know if that's the right message to give to our residents. I don't know.
It's like a mixed message.
It's a mixed message. So, we can bring.
It's not consistent.
We can bring that up as well. And, okay, I just had a couple of questions. I know the building inspections will continue, and I just want to make sure they're kind of, you know, because I know the building inspector is concerned, too, with the amount of the public he's dealing with, that those are very necessary inspections over the next few weeks and not routine ones, because I don't think that's fair to him.
Right.
So, that would be my input on that. Because I know they say, you know, business has to go on. Well, a lot of people's businesses are on hold. So, we, I just want to make sure staff feels comfortable, because they were very concerned with having a plan and being open like they are. And one said, I saw 25 people today paying and.
She almost panicked today a little bit, on, on the edge. And I certainly can understand why.
Right. So, is there, there's also a box outside of Town Hall to leave the excise tax?
Yes.
I thought they would do it on Thursday. It's tomorrow. I don't know why I thought Thursday.
I thought they would do it the 18th.
18th, yeah.
That's, that's Thursday, right?
I guess that's Wednesday, so we're both.
Oh, Wednesday. Okay. That's, tomorrow's the 17th.
But there's a box for it to leave.
Yeah.
I mean, they can pay online, but for the people who don't have computers.
Yeah, they can pay online.
So, I, I just think it's the right thing to do. I mean, I also heard on the news, you know, the Supreme Court canceled their oral arguments for the first time since 1918. So, if they can cancel that, you know.
There was something on the news, too, that I want to, I want to further check, and I'll check myself, and I'm sure Jeff will. There was some proposal at some point by the state. Now, a lot of things got thrown out at the last few weeks, I mean, discussion, the last few days, I should say. And one of them was taxes that people owe to the various communities and penalties that they would be foregone because it's not anybody's issue. I mean, it's not, no one intentionally is doing this. They, they can't get there or whatever. And they were talking about that, but I never, I don't have the final outcome. So, I, I want to research that a little bit to see what did they finally decide? Because there's supposed to be help, because my understanding is even the tax filing date is going to change without penalty, because not every, many tax offices have closed. So, if people can't, can't file their income tax, if they go to someone who does it for them, you're not, how can you be punished for what you don't know what to do with? And I heard that that was also, or I read.
Part of that Families First legislation, like, so that.
Part of that is federal from the IRS. What they can do for this was to extend, but there's no date. It says extend, but there's no given date. And that's what I want to research further, but it's on the, it's on the list of discussion.
So, maybe we can ask Barbara to look into it. You don't have to. I know she did, because I saw Ann Murphy, and she happened to say the same thing. You can't, you know, delay. She doesn't think, she said, talk to Barbara, but I don't think you can lift the penalty.
We need to check the state.
But if it's an emergency, maybe.
That's where it's under, an emergency.
DOR has already lifted it, in which case then I would be on board to lift the penalty.
But you have to.
If we're able to.
Right, if we can.
Yeah.
Also, you have to look at that for the water and sewer bills.
Oh, yeah. I mean, whatever's due now.
Yeah, I think we impose the $10 late fee. So, I, I think that we would be able to do the water and sewer bills.
Oh, for sure.
We, we impose a $10 late fee.
For sure. They do that as water and do now?
No.
It's not. But I know in the past I've had to pay the $10 because I've paid late.
You forget, yeah.
So, and I do know that's something Jim Malloy instituted years ago, the $10 fine.
I almost forgot the excise tax till I looked at it today. So, I mean, it's easy to forget.
But to the extent, it's in our power to, to make it a little bit easier on residents, I would like to do that as well. Okay. So, are we, are we ready to move on?
Well, what information do you want for Thursday? I have some information on excise tax that you're looking for.
To waive. I'd like information on what, in the last two pieces of legislation, one was passed. I don't know if the Senate passed that Families First Act yet. But I want to know what in that bill benefits towns and our ability to pay hourly employees, for example, who we order home. I know they've extended unemployment, you know, do they go to unemployment for two weeks? Or I kind of want to know.
The bill shortens the waiting period for unemployment to one week.
Correct.
But the Senate, as of this morning, hadn't taken up the bill.
It's not taken up yet.
As of this morning, I've not had an opportunity to read the news today.
They're going to, they're going to do some, they'll do something this week.
They have to.
We just don't know what they're going to cut out. But I guess I want to know what money is available to towns in, in all that legislation. I'd like the website updated to include.
It will be tomorrow.
All the closings.
I, I personally would like Jeff to communicate to the department heads tomorrow, brainstorm ideas on how we can keep the town moving forward safely for the employees of this town.
And I've done that. I mean, there, I know you got feedback, but we've had meetings on this issue. And up until yesterday, there wasn't, the world was coming to an end. Because we met Thursday as a group. And at the Thursday meeting, even the governor was like, we're not closing schools. The schools, even Tantasca was here, and they say we're, we're staying open. So, Friday night, something happened, Tantasca closed, and it turned out that they closed because they couldn't get staff, because their staff were staying home to watch their kids. So, they closed. And then on Sunday, the governor took the act he took, which led to meetings this morning on preparing for closing this building. Up until yesterday, there wasn't the sense of urgency that we're hearing today, which is fine. And today, we took the right actions to get this done.
Oh, no, I'm not, I'm not criticizing anything. I just, like, there's going to be a lot of little details here about building inspections, planning department, what, you know, that we need to all be on the same page on everything.
I agree. But I just want to add, though, I did feel personally that there was a state, that there was a sense of urgency last week. And that's why I went to Ken, and I requested that Ken come to one of our meetings. I wanted him to come tonight. And he said he was busy and he'd come in two weeks, and I sent that to, and I don't deny that there was, but I think that the board could be better informed of what has gone on. You know, so I know you met with the department, and I already said this, but you met with the department heads and you brainstormed. Even if we're copied on that, a little feedback, because I had residents asking, just, you know, Board of Selectmen, I called a staff-wide meeting. We're discussing things to do. Some of us might have wanted to go to that if we could, could have gone.
Yeah.
But at least been copied on it, because I was already hearing from last week, some urgency from some staff asking me, do we have a plan? And I went to Ken about, so I'm just saying, just to be a little.
And as we spoke today, I apologize.
No, I get it.
And I believed I did send out an email, and I have to see what's going on with my iPad email, because I believed it went out. It didn't go out, but.
Okay. No, I get it. So, just if we're kept, and like the KP.
And I agree.
Right, that's all.
I have kept you in the loop on many things, and I anticipate keeping you in the loop on many more.
All right. And then when stuff is forwarded, like, Priscilla had forwarded it to me, because I guess Gene sent it to the planning board when the KP lodged this morning. So, it's great that we got it tonight, but it just, we're really not, we were in a position to kind of read this. And so, when it comes in the morning, just like forward it to us would be my suggestion, because we could have already have read it.
Right.
Because Priscilla had said, did you read up on the KP law postponed? I was like, I didn't get it yet. And she just happened to get it because of planning.
Right.
So, just, just to be, just to be better in the loop. And I know, for example, the, the chair of, Linda Kocalis said she's had communication with you. Just let us know that.
All she sent to me was, she forwarded me something I already had from the governor office, which I had already sent to you all. That's the only communication I've had with her. And she gave me her cell phone number.
But she, right. But just, I'm just saying, henceforth, if we're copied, it, it would be helpful.
I'll send you everything.
Yeah.
Can I ask about Thursday? If we start counting these numbers, we're going to hit way over 25. We probably could hit over 25. Can we do like we used to do on the, the BOs and the FinCom meeting where we gave them time slots? So that it minimizes? Or do we need them all here at the same time? I'm not sure. I'm just trying to hold this 25.
How many, we're.
Well, you have, you have, you have the town clerk, you have, we're seven. You have the town clerk, you have the, the finance person, I'm sure, to ask questions about what the cost might be if we decide to pay, or we don't need her. Maybe we don't need finance.
I think that, I think Barbara can stay in her office if we don't have a question.
Okay. And so can Asses, or we don't need her.
No.
Then you're going to have senior center, recreation.
Police, fire, recreation.
So, will we hit 25?
I guess we really don't need recreation. It's our recommendation that they close.
Right.
I mean, if.
Unless you can get the answer, Jeff, if they have any plan to clean it, I would like to know that before I vote.
And that's fine. I don't believe we have a good way of daily disinfecting a play structure.
We need the Board of Health, the Board of Health agent is coming, Linda Kocalis is coming. And he indicated that if she's free, the Board of Health nurse.
Yes.
So, I mean, I think we'll probably be around 12.
Okay. And seven of us.
I was counting. So, there's seven of us. And then there's the two chiefs.
Yeah.
Nine.
Robin.
Robin. 10.
She's talking about, she's keeping up on the cleanliness of the buildings?
Yeah.
If you have questions on that?
That's 10. Then you have senior center, 11.
11. Three people from the Board of Health.
Right. 11, that's 14.
14.
I would like inspections, someone for, maybe Nelson here, how many carry out?
15.
Yeah, I think inspectional services, including the Board of Health, and sometimes DPW does some inspections. I think we got to, you know, some, I don't know what the policy is now, but I think they should only do absolutely necessary inspections between now and April 6. Any, any inspections that can be put off beyond April 6 should be put off.
Well, maybe we should just do that.
Well, I think we need the inspector to tell us that. I really do.
I don't think we need them, but they should be here, so we, everybody has a meeting of the minds.
So, it would be about.
I don't think, yeah, let's try to keep it to 15.
16 or 20, possibly.
I don't think we should have 20, I'd like to try to keep it, I mean, we don't...
And they leave, unless they need, yeah, see, they interact, so you never know.
Maybe Robin, for example, since you're sitting here already, and you're privy to all this, maybe you can just put in a memo, what safety, what additional cleaning measures you've instituted during this time, and maybe you don't have to, I'm just trying to limit the number. Who we really need here is Board of Health.
Yeah, your doors...
Yeah, she's not gonna be very far away.
If we need her, we can go get her.
Okay, I think you can just put in writing, like, some of it, they can just put in writing. It's the give and take with the Board of Health, and...
Everybody else too, sometimes.
Leslie, you know, but the other people, they really don't have to, and our fire chiefs, people like...
Police chief.
That's what I mean.
Yeah.
Safety complex and Board of Health, I don't think Robin has to be here.
And actually, we don't even need the town clerk, because she's already said, from what Jeff said, that the elections are fine. So that's one less.
That's one less, yeah.
So this building actually only has Jeff and Andrea actually out of this building, if I'm not mistaken.
Right, if we have a question about them, you're already...
You can run downstairs.
Barbara Barry, about whether we can waive anything. She's really here for a financial...
Right, and we don't need Lynn, 'cause she's already expressed to Jeff that the election was okay as far as she's concerned at this point in time, so there's nothing for her.
I mean, that decision may very well be lifted from her altogether by Charlie and Heather. I mean, 'cause I would be surprised, he's been very prescient. And if things get worse, you know, the bell curve goes up, I think that he'll
Oh, yeah.
probably call it, myself.
Yeah, that'll be, yeah, whatever.
The emergency management director, the fire chief...
Police chief.
Police chief, I meant, is gonna be here. How about the emergency management coordinator?
Yeah, I can have Kevin be here.
I mean, I'm just asking.
I think the chief, he works under the chief, can he just get his info from the chief?
I would rather have the chief here, because he's the one in charge.
Well, Chief Ford is coming.
Yeah, that's the one I prefer to hear from, personally.
I want to know what the town administrator thinks, whether it would be...
I understand your concern about bodies, we'll count the bodies, and if there's room, we'll have Kevin here. If not, I'll ask him to stay back.
Let's make 15, my view of 15 is...
Yeah, max.
Max. We're trying to kind of honor President Trump.
You know, like, if we double up, 'cause that, to me, would be doubling up. Because Kevin's gonna do actually whatever the chief is going to assign. He's not gonna go on his own, he can't.
Right.
So to me, that's a body we may not need at that point.
Right. Okay, are we able to move on?
We could do 17 and a half, that's halfway between Trump and Baker.
Do you, you want to read the correspondence?
Oh, where is it? What page, 200 and... Oh, okay, Charter of Communications again. We have Communication, it says March 3rd here, but the letter is dated February 28th from Charter of Communication. Yeah, okay. And effective March 31st, Spectrum, My Plan Latino Monthly Pricing Will Increase From $44.99 to $54.99. Existing customers will not be affected. And then another one on February 27th, and there's an attachment, Form 500, which is the outage report. And I guess they've gotten five billing complaints, one customer service complaint, and two complaints about reception. So, only two complaints about reception. Do you believe that?
It depends how you count.
Can you believe that?
Or else the first three twos are missing.
So that's, that's the correspondence from the Board of Selectmen.
Okay, so we'll move on to approval of minutes. We have March 2nd. Oh, well, I guess we can give ours, and then we'll wait for Chase.
Uh-huh. Round the March 2nd minutes, Chase.
I have one on, may I, Madam Chair?
Yes.
On page 234, Andrea, it says, the beginning of the third, what would be the third paragraph, "Selectwoman Jimis and Vice Chair Dowling Agreed in Favor of Heel Sturbridge Being One of the..."
It just kind of ends.
It just kind of...
I'm tired.
"One of the what's," you know?
I'm not sure. I'm not sure. I'll look into that.
I didn't, I have to tell you, when I read them before, I did not catch it, I just sort of caught it right now.
We've got a lot of meetings on this.
I know, it kind of, they kind of blur.
All right, I'm gonna... On page 233, maybe we can, 'cause I don't think we're explaining it well, and I don't totally remember what my thought process was on, allow the process to slow down, and the town will be able to ease into the sale. So can we just, just the Vice Chair Dowling stated that she has an issue... I'm sorry, the second full paragraph. Vice Chair Dowling stated that she has an issue with healing, converting, and lifting the five-year moratorium, because this would mean the town would have three retail marijuana stores. Can you scratch that next sentence? 'Cause I'd have to explain in a lot of detail what I meant, but the bottom line is I didn't want three stores, so...
Is...
Anybody else?
Yeah, under new business, I really, I think I asked for additional traffic counts, not studies. I think there's, the studies that have been done said that we need more traffic counts. So could you change the name, the word "studies" to "counts"? See, O-U-N-T, yes? So that, yeah, the studies that have been done indicate that we need more traffic counts.
Anything else, Chase, do you have any changes?
I have no changes.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve the March 2nd minutes?
As amended?
As amended.
Yes, so moved.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, March 5. Any changes?
I have no changes.
Not either.
I don't.
Motion to approve March 5.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Andrea, I know that was a very confusing meeting, and I thought you did a really good job with it.
That was a good job.
I know, the meeting minutes are really kind of complicated around the candidate stuff, so. March 9th, this is an easy one.
Yeah, there's only you and I.
So I guess we're still gonna need, I know sometimes people abstain from voting, 'cause they're not present. You actually don't have to, you can still vote for a minute, so we've always had that practice. But in this case, I don't think we're gonna be able to approve the minutes, unless somebody else is willing to.
Unless they stay watched, unless, well, yeah.
There's a rule of necessity.
Okay, so do I have a motion to approve the March 9th meeting? And I'll second it, 'cause I was here.
And I'll vote in favor by the rule of necessity.
Okay, all in favor? This is when we didn't have a quorum, Chase.
Yeah.
Okay, do you want to vote or abstain?
I have to vote.
Okay, so 4-0. We don't have a citizens forum. Anyone want to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah, very nice job, Mary.
See everybody in two days. 3.